I know, she's got the screen in the way, she can't see me. All right. I hate to interrupt the beautiful music this evening. Thank you so much for our prelude music this evening, provided by our illustrious Susan Miyamoto and Emily Outthere. Thank you so much. It is always a nice way to start our meetings. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order, and we have an invocation tonight by Chaplain Richard Insalaco. Did I get that right? You are with the Riverside County Sheriff's Department, and if the flag salute could be led by our own Mary Ann Edwards, please.
Please bow your head according to your custom. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussions, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of our community. We pray this in your wonderful name. Amen.
Would you please join me in honoring our flag and our freedom? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you. That's a really flattering view on the screen of all of us. All right, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Alexander?
Here.
Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Mayor Ron?
Here.
Councilmember Schwan?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
All right. We have a couple of certificates to give this evening, and of course, a presentation as well. So, I do not believe that... Let's go ahead and start with Hospice of the Valley. Is Christie here this evening? Hello, how are you? All right, let's start with that. So Hospice of the Valley 40th anniversary. I can't believe it's 40 years. City of Temecula would like to recognize Hospice of the Valleys in celebration of 40 years of service to Temecula Valley. Since 1982, Hospice of the Valleys has provided loving care to people with life-threatening illnesses and is the only nonprofit hospice organization headquartered in the Temecula Valley. Their mission to care for all patients in the area regardless of their ability to pay, and is accredited by the Community Health Accreditation Partner, proud member of the National Hospice and Palliative Care Organization, and the California Hospice and Palliative Care Association. We congratulate Hospice of the Valleys on celebrating 40 years of dedicated service to Temecula and our region, and we thank you for all the contributions you have made to our community, and I hope you have a few words to share with us this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Cochran, the Executive Medical Director for Hospice of the Valleys. It is said, and it is true, that the two inescapable facts of life are death and taxes. And I'm pleased to not be involved in the taxes, and although it's very difficult and challenging, all of us know that we have loved ones that will face death. And when they do, they should be treated with dignity, love, compassion, and the best level of care. And we want to thank the City of Temecula, who have been very generous in supporting Hospice of the Valleys, which enable us to provide that care to patients who do not have insurance, who don't have financial resources, so that anytime a resident in this area needs hospice care at the end of life, without respect to whether or not they have finances or insurance, they will receive the very best of care. So we thank you so much for your support, and we thank our community for their support, and it's been a wonderful 40 years, and we're looking to 40 more wonderful years. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and we have this certificate of recognition here for you, and I wanted to say on a personal note, three years ago, my father passed away, and you were there for him. And I know that level of care is extended to everyone in our community and surrounding area. He was Vietnam veteran, wonderful man, and he needed help at the end of his life. And it just means so much to my family to be able to present this to you, and just know that you're part of our community, and the level of care that you provide for people that need it the most is just unmatched. So, thank you very much. Appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, now, personally, I would like to deliver this one. This is a certificate of achievement. Kate Jacobson, come on down. Remarkable family in our community, the Jacobsons, good friends, and apparently just an outstanding national athlete as well. City of Temecula congratulates Kate Jacobson on outstanding athletic and academic accomplishments. You were named the High School All-American Academic All-American California Player of the Year, and the All-Region Team West by United Soccer Coaches. CIF Southern Section honors you with the title of CIF Student Athlete of the Year, and the CIF Offensive MVP and Team Captain for two years, and you received the Student Athlete of the Year and Scholar Athlete of the Year Award. I mean, lots of awards on your wall. So incredible. And we're proud of all the work you've done on and off the field here in our community, and parents, if you could come down as well, because you get to share in this amazing accomplishment, because I know you had a little bit of something to do with all of that. And if you wouldn't mind, share with us a few words of wisdom here.
Of course. I've lived in Temecula my whole life. I fell in love with the game here. I played my first soccer game in Ronald Reagan. I've gone to school here. I don't know why I'm getting emotional about this. I don't know, it's just, it's all coming full circle as I'm leaving here, and I've loved what you guys have done with this great city, and I'm proud to be from Temecula.
Well, thank you. Thank you to these amazing parents as well. You guys are pillars of our community, and you've raised just a remarkable person and champion for Temecula. So thank you all so much, and congratulations. All right. And just as thrilling and exciting as all the accomplishments we've seen in our community, Rancho California Water District, come on down, because there is nothing more thrilling than to talk about water. And honestly, no, this is kind of a big deal, and wanted to have you give a quick presentation on the recycling, or I'm sorry, recycled water conservation project, and all the exciting new additions to our community. How are you doing this evening?
Doing well, thank you. And it's always a very tough act to follow, let's be honest.
I built it up as much as I could.
Appreciate it. So, we're here quite frequently, and that's what we're committed to do, to continue to give an update on the state's water issues. And every time I'm here, I say thank you, and I really mean it. We don't have, you know, other agencies don't have the same partnership with their local agencies and cities as we do. Your staff is phenomenal, and it's not just because they're sitting here that I say that. You know, as we've seen, just watch the news, the drought conditions are getting worse, and we talk about, you know, actions that we've taken as a community, investing in local supply, et cetera, and storage, et cetera, and then in action, what we've seen at the state level. That is what it is. What we're seeing in Western U.S. is really a need for curtailment of water supply. We have the head of the USBR, Commissioner Tomlin, two to four million acre feet of supply needs to be, you know, we need to find that. And so what that means for our community is we're going to continue to be asking to step it up in terms of the conservation locally. And our community has done a great job, and the city is a phenomenal partner in that process. And so we're here tonight to say thank you, and highlight one of the key projects that we've done together, and, you know, to the team. So with that, just a couple of quick highlights, the thank you, what we're doing in terms of, you know, in terms of our community. But this particular project, when we look at our water supply, we have recycled water. So we're able to treat wastewater to highly, to high value, advanced treatment, and reuse that water in a productive way. That really is a drought-proofing mechanism, and the city's been along with us on the ride for a long time. We have a project tonight that started in 2017, it's $570,000 roughly in total project cost, and we were able to contribute 75% of that. And so by the city making an investment, you save money. By the city making investment, we save money, and we save water. It's a win-win. 330,000 square feet of turf removed, and through a series of high-efficiency water consumption. And then, but the proof is in the pudding. And one of the key things that we want to communicate to the community is, we can do this in a very aesthetically pleasing way, a way that meets what the city's landscape ordinances are, and that's important, is what we keep our community what it is, you know, really a gem of Southwest Riverside County, and we can do it in the city by helping us show that this is really a beautiful way to approach it. It really helps us bring along other customers throughout the community. And with that, I'd like to introduce and welcome up our Board President, President Carol Lee Gonzalez Brady, and our Senior Vice President, John Rossi. I also have Kimmy Wall and Danielle Coats with us tonight. And I'm going to turn it over to President Gonzalez Brady, who has a gift for the city.
Thank you, Rob. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. It's such an honor and privilege to be here today, and to join Rob and the rest of our team in thanking the city and the council, and certainly our executive team, for all the hard work in sending the message to the community in a positive way, that we do indeed need to conserve, but in our eyes, we don't necessarily find that to be the only solution, and short-term as well as long-term programs, and thinking outside the box. It's what we've been trying to do, and this, I think, demonstrates the kind of partnership and collaboration that we have with our city, and we are so incredibly grateful and pleased. So, John, would you like to say any words at all? Come on up. John Rossi is our Senior VP, and he always is a little more eloquent than I am, so I'm going to hand it over to him.
You know that's not true. I'll just simply echo what she's saying. We've lived in the community, my family and I, six children, for 30 years, and we are so delighted to be part, and I'm just so happy to give back. But the colleagues and the staff at the Water District are tremendous, and it's just great to be part of the team. So, thank you for having us.
All right.
With that, Carol Lee, do you want to give the honorary? I promised the city a Happy Gilmore check, and so hopefully this delivers on that promise. But basically, out of that 570,000, 426,000 is directly contributed from a grant that we received to offset the investment, and we consider it an investment that the city's made, so that we thank you. And, wait, may we deliver it?
Absolutely. My colleagues want to join me down there. You couldn't throw in the one penny, though, huh? Thank you so much. All right. These are always awkward to bring to the bank, too. One more, we have a couple of quick questions. I'm gonna keep you on this hot seat for a minute.
No problem, we're used to it.
Okay, so, we all know we have $100 billion surplus in the state of California. So what are we doing about the state water fix? For the state water project, that it's always an issue of money. Now that there's no issue of money, why are they not fixing this problem?
So do I give the direct answer, or do I dodge?
No, direct, please.
Yeah, so I actually have a meeting up with the governor on Friday, and it's part of that conversation.
Okay.
From Sacramento, we are raising the flag that we really do need to make investments. We can't, we know this is cyclical. We can't continue to live the same thing and assume it's not gonna, it's not gonna change. And so, from our standpoint, we have a campaign going, a water crisis now, so we really are trying to raise the consciousness, and so that it goes beyond just maybe a myopic thought process, and really trying to open it up to a bigger discussion. I can only do so much with respect to the state, but that shows you a very active, you know, sitting down with the governor on Friday is pretty active. Now, what are we doing, and I appreciate the question because it gives a chance, you know, we went to DC a week and a half ago, and so we're also working on a federal level, you know, so sometimes we just need to solve the problem ourselves, you know, just is what it is. Senator Padilla has been phenomenal. He has put in for $23 million in authorization for us to develop our groundwater basin. And so, you know, that's us working as a region to say, hey, we have an asset. How do we solve not only our own problem, but the regional problem? We're working very closely in a way that hasn't been done in the past with our partner agencies, Eastern and Western and Elsinore, to look at broader solutions. That's a commitment, and that's real money to start this process. And then, we actually, excuse me, Congressmember Isa has also been phenomenal. So we had a chance to sit down with Congressman Isa, as well as Congressman Calvert and Levin, and they are there in our support as well. So we're working outside of the confines and constraints of the state to try to think, how do we solve this on a broader standpoint? So hopefully that's a start to the answer, but, I mean, truly, from our perspective, we are, we are doing, we want the community to know how much we're doing on our behalf. We are not sitting idly by. We are investing recycled water, those alternative supplies, and so that when someone, when your constituents ask, what is Rancho doing for us, you can say with a straight face, they're doing a lot, and that is a true, true statement.
So, back on recycled water, so do we have an excess? Do we have more recycled than we do actually need, or usage?
So we fully utilize all recycled water, but we are expanding the program, and so long-term at Buildout, we have another 5,000 acre feet that we can use. And so we're looking at it from, there's the direct usage, you know, irrigation is we're looking at, but also can we do it to recharge our aquifer? And so we talk about, we have this gem of maybe 150,000, 50 billion gallons, let me put it in, you know, normal people terms, of storage that we could potentially use. Well, we need supply for that, and so then those, you know, wet years where we have excess supply coming in from the Colorado and Northern California, we could store it for the drier years. But we could also use recycled water to then put that in that basin and be part of our portfolio. And so we are looking, we're actually working with agencies down through Oceanside, and it's about 12,000 acre feet, that we're looking at developing through federal funds. And all of a sudden, when you get federal funds, what was economically unaffordable becomes just the normal price of water. And so it's a really good thing for our customers.
I was just having the discussion about gray water or recycled water just the other day, and I know that there is, in the future, there will be greater capacity. The issue right now is the transport of that water to the areas of the city that we need it. So just rest assured that when you're ready to dig up our streets, we'll be right there to support you.
We appreciate it, and along those lines, Pat and I have talked about how to time our projects, you know, together in the right way. We are looking at the next, the next section in terms of being able to expand our pipelines. We held a part of, if I may, you know, part of the emergency declaration by the governor, is that we need to basically take out non-functional turf for commercial customers, and as well as HOAs. Well, that's confusing to our customers. Does that mean residential, I have to pull it out because I live in an HOA? No, no, no. It's common areas that are, you know, basically translation, you know, the only time you walk across it is when someone mows it. And so, you know, part of this process, and we've had really good discussions with our community and the HOAs on this, is looking for opportunities to use recycled water, and some are just really close, and so we're looking for where we might be able to extend those pipelines near term. Pat, did you have anything you want to add to that?
Well, we, the check that was presented was for converting several of our services from potable to reclaimed water, and we've got another project that we're working on right now with Rancho Water to be able to convert some other services. I think Invergard Park is the next project that we're looking at converting to recycled water. And on the lines of the turf reduction, as Rob mentioned, that that's part of the new state mandate, and we discussed at our subcommittee meeting earlier today, we've applied for removing turf at, I believe it's seven different locations, at a number of parks and fire stations in the city. And when the turf is removed, we replace it with other landscaping that's drought-tolerant, uses less water, and still looks aesthetically pleasing. So there's grants actually through Rancho and through MWD that are actually paying for the cost of removing and replacing this turf, so it's kind of a win-win-win situation there. So we definitely have a great partnership with the Water District and do everything we can to conserve water and meet the state requirements.
All right. You've been phenomenal partners with the city, and we look forward to continue the work. I know you guys are on the very cutting edge of trying to keep us in the good graces of water conservation. Thank you all for all the hard work you do, your board, your staff, and leadership there, because without you, we wouldn't be in the state we are right now, and I appreciate you, all the advocacy you're doing, both in Sacramento and DC.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
All right. Well, we had the trifecta of hospice, academic achievement, and water tonight, so where do we go from there? I guess we go to our board and commission reports, and this evening, let's start with Denise Wilson. Good evening.
Hello. Okay, we're on. Evening, Mayor, City Council, staff, and our guests. My name is Denise Wilson, and I just want to give you an update on what's going on with our Race Equity Diversity and Inclusion Commission. We had a commission, we received a presentation from Allison Willis. She's the Executive Director of the Community Mission of Hope, and Rancho Damascitas. Ms. Willis provided an overview of the program offered through the Community Mission of Hope, and asked the commission to spread the awareness of the same to the underserved segments of the community that may benefit from the programs. And I do want to add that last year, 2021, the Community Mission of Hope helped feed over 12,000 individuals through their food pantry. So we just want to applaud them for that. And also, they are having their first annual Cycle for Hope Bike Ride on October the 2nd, and I think we have some of the council members that are going to be sponsors there already, so thank you so much for that. And then we also had a overview of the general municipal election process, and so this November 2022 will be actually the Ready Commission's first election, general election, that we will get to be a part of. And so we just wanted to let everyone know that we meet on August 11th at 6:00 PM, right here in this chamber, and we would like to invite you to come and be a part of our meeting. And that completes my report.
Thank you. Planning Commission, good evening.
Hello. Happy to be here. I am here tonight for Gary, who couldn't be here tonight, so I am Vice Chair, Lene Turley-Treyho, and this is our stellar commission, and I feel honored to work with them, each one of them, Bob Hagel, Adam Ruiz, and John Tolicio. And we also meet the first and third Wednesday evenings at 6:00 PM for anyone out there wanting to come. It's actually really great. We would love to have people come. So, we have been busy, and the first thing that we approved was at the Mary Phillips Senior Center, we added to their outdoor recreation area, so they are going to have kind of a multi-use outdoor area. I tried getting a pickleball court. There's not enough room, so I think that would be awesome in the future for them. But we're also going to replace the HVAC there with high-efficiency units. And then the next thing that we voted on was a car wash in the mall area, which is going to, so we're actually going to be demolishing Famous Dave's that's there, and putting the car wash in instead. So, really like the look of this, and I think staff did a great job in working with the applicant, and helping it be fit right in there with the mall area and the look there. So, we're excited about that. And then the next thing that we voted on, so over off of Rancho California and Cosmic Drive, we have the Rendezvous Apartments. And so this is development, and if you've been down there and seen it, and those out in the audience also, it's beautiful. Like, it is really a wonderful development. You look up there, and you don't even realize that they're apartments. And so the rest of that will be developed, and so we voted on that. We voted on approving the general plan amendment for that, for an overlay. And so we were able to see what that's going to look like, and how that's going to look finished, and so we're excited about finishing that project. And that's what we have done. So do you have any questions for me?
Anyone? All right, not seeing any. Thank you for the hard work.
All right.
Appreciate you both. All right, on to our public safety report this evening. We are happy to hear from our Sheriff's Department.
Good evening, everybody. So I'm going to go over some calls for service from January 1st to July 1st. So as of that timeframe, we've responded to 39,694 calls for service. Comparatively to last year, we responded to, during the same time, 41,953. So total for the month of June, we responded to 6,814 calls for service in the City of Temecula. And comparatively to last year, during the same time, 7,041 calls for service. I want to move on to something very exciting that's going to be happening as of August 2nd. It is the, our National Night Out. I invite, well, I was hoping for more people here to advertise this event, but I'm going to leave it up to all of you guys to advertise it for me. Call your friends, your family, bring everybody to our National Night Event, which will be on August 2nd, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. They're going to have face painting for the kids, live DJ, displays of demonstration. I'm going to bring some really cool toys to you. So you'll see some fancy trucks, big bear cats, maybe, maybe a sheriff's drone or whatnot, maybe some horses, too. So bring those to the kids. We also are going to be out with Cal Fire, CHP may be there. It's all the first responders that we can get to, to enjoy this with us. And it's a good time to meet all of you, families, friends, residents of Temecula, and we might have a special surprise for Mr., our dog McGruff. He might be there. Even if it's 105, we'll still bring him out. So, anyway, that's, it's going to be a good time. Probably a third of our department will be there, greeting all of you, and seeing all your happy faces, and playing games and mingling, so hope to see y'all there.
All right. Look forward to seeing you guys there. It's a great night, and certainly a great event for our community. So thank you for all, all the work you guys do. All right, moving on. Do we have any public comment this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have-
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have three public comments on non-aggendized items.
All right. Can we have our first speaker, please?
Yes. The first speaker is Payam Deshanavar, to be followed by Diane Sitar.
Evening. Hi. Thank you very much for your time, Mayor, City Council, staff, and everyone else for your time. I have a lot to share here. And I'm going to, I really appreciate if you guys can take screenshots or pictures as I talk. City Council Alexander, I really appreciate your advice of telling me choose one or two subjects, but there's just so much I want to talk about in my OCD. Time is running out. I have to just, I try to get as much as I can. Here's some, just some resources. And I'll just let them stay here while I get to a few points. I know California is a model for the 2030 Great Reset, Build Back Worse Agenda. But the good thing about here is there's a lot of good people here. And right now, well, we can set examples for other places. And that's, and that's very important, I think. That's, that's my main theme for today. I would like to decrease the directed electromagnetic energy weapons that are used by the military industrial complex intelligence community that are hacked by enemies foreign and domestic. They can change cognitive function, change emotion, mental state and physical state. Even a letter from the City Council Mayor is an amazing start. I've been a target individual in California of LRAS V2K EMF, ELF, DARPA projects that are also hacked by DACA killing China. And, you know, 5G is just one form, you know. It's just, I really appreciate to halt all these projects. It's a violation of our health and privacy. This is just to fulfill the globalist agenda. Even if it means losing positions and the next successor would pledge to do the same. Courage is contagious. We do not have to comply for the 2030 or 2050 agenda. And also I'd like to investigate the pesticides like atrazine that are being spread in our food and water and investigate and halt all those projects. They're just Great Reset, UN, World Economic Forum, just those agendas. And I also like to say that we do not need to comply with Project Mockingbird Project, Paperclip Project, Lockstep, and Answer to 1984 is 1776 for all. You know, I also still like to have a forensic audit done and release the results. I can set an example for other states that are having trouble doing so. And, um, and I know time is running out, but here's, it's kind of chaotic, but here's the rest of my speech that I didn't get to. I really appreciate if those can be addressed at the, at the next session. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Diane Sitar, followed by our last speaker, Judy Zelfecker.
Evening, Diane.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Diane Sitar, and this is my husband, Mark Sitar. And we're here tonight on behalf of the Temecula Community Christmas Dinner. And first of all, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Edwards and the City of Temecula for their very generous donation to our Christmas in July campaign. The City of Temecula and the staff of the Senior Mary Phillips Senior Center have been valued partners for many years in our event, and we really appreciate your continued support. The Temecula Community Christmas Dinner has served our community for over 27 years. And earlier this year, our 28-foot cargo trailer with all of our equipment in it was stolen. And so items in the trailer included our oven, pots, pans, utensils, Santa's chair, which I'm sure was a big surprise to the person who took it, and some leftover Christmas gifts for children, just to name a few items. So our Christmas in July camp fundraising campaign will provide the funds to replace the trailer and all of the equipment as well as fund our 2022 Christmas dinner. I've been, Mark and I have been a part of the committee for many years to organize this event. And the committee is comprised of many Rotarians and community members. We serve approximately 1,200 meals on Christmas Day to the community. And it doesn't matter if you're wealthy or you're poor, if you're a resident or you're just visiting the Temecula area. If you want to experience the joy of Christmas and spend Christmas with others in your community, you're welcome to come to the event. So we appreciate the city and our community joining us to keep this tradition of the community, for the community and the community spirit alive for many years to come. We just would like to say thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And our last speaker is Judy Zelfecker.
Good evening.
Hi. How are you doing?
Good.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Judy Zelfecker. Thank you. You got that really good, Randy. You're doing awesome. And I actually am a member of the Rotary Club of Temecula. I'm here to again personally thank Councilwoman Mary Ann Edwards and the city for your support for the Community Christmas Dinner. You are a good community partner and put the heart in the heart of Southern California wine country. The Community Christmas Dinner, as Diane was stating, has been operating for over 27 years. It was started in 1994 by Buck Chemis, who is a local businessman, part of our Old Town Community Association, and really passionate about bringing the Christmas spirit. When Buck retired, he passed the reins on to the Sunrise Rotary Club. That's where Diane and Mark are a part of. And four other Rotary Clubs in the valley that get together with community members to make sure no one is alone on Christmas Day. Those residents that cannot enjoy Christmas dinner, sit down at the dinner, get delivered both their Christmas dinner and a warm blanket along with the many Christmas wishes by the volunteers that generously give of their time on Christmas Day to spread the Christmas spirit. As you know, the Senior Center is going to be under construction this holiday season. But I am here to very happily report that another great partner in our community, Dr. Roger Schultz and Mount San Jacinto College, will be hosting our Christmas dinner. We will be utilizing their amazing kitchen that they use with their, for their students and also their culinary staff. And they've got a special place for Santa to be as well as a wonderful cafeteria for over 300 people at a time to be eating and enjoying Christmas dinner. So we're really excited to be able to work with that partnership. It really shows how Temecula is and how we all work together to make things happen. This couldn't be possible without the help of the city, without the help of Rotarians, without the help of the community. And we hope that everyone here behind me and out there that is listening, because we know everybody is listening to this city council meeting, that they all go to Facebook and go to the Temecula Community Christmas Dinner Facebook page. We do have that fundraiser up till the end of July. We've got about another five days. And we have, we have a little bit more money to raise to make sure that we can get everything we need to make sure this Christmas is amazing. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on, we have city council reports. Who would like to go first? And I'm just going to pick somebody at random.
I can go first. I don't mind.
Zach.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to announce to the community, we did this a few years ago, pre-COVID. I feel like we're doing things again. And this is one of those. So Route 55 is the second highest performing route in the RTA system. And it essentially serves the Harveston Community and some schools along the way as well as Promenade Mall. So in the Riverside Transit Agency, along with the City of Temecula, invite the community to this Route 55 event. This is a ride-along event. One of the, one of the main themes we hear from parents is wanting to know, how does it work? If my kid's going to get on the trolley for the first time, what does that look like? Well, you can experience this with your children. So give them that confidence and lower the bar so that they can ride this trolley. Route 55 is free. It runs during school hours and during the school year. So at this event, community members can board the Temecula trolley, learn how easy it is to get around town. And again, the free trolley serves the Lakeside Community of Harveston and the area's premier shopping and dining destination, the Promenade Temecula. It's going to be a great day. It's really nice to see children, students using this public transportation. I think it gives kids some autonomy, especially when they go off to whether college or start their career in a different city. Being able to understand and ride public transit is an important part of someone's life. So we're here to help and hope to see everyone out Wednesday, August 3rd, from 10:00 to 2:00 at Harveston Community Park. See everyone there.
Thank you. All right. Yes, I am.
All right. So a couple of things here. I'm going to talk about the public swim. I don't know how many people have been going to the pool. Sometimes I go up to people, it's like, oh, have you been to our pool this year or whatnot? There's a slide, a diving board. It's a dollar for residents. And people are like, really? We have that here? So I just want to encourage everybody, if you have not taken either your kids or your grandkids or even yourselves out there, I really encourage you to get out there to the pool. It's a way to kind of keep cool and beat some of this heat coming up. And it's, again, it's very inexpensive. One of the things we've been working on with the, with staff as well is trying to create a new waiver sheet to make it even more expedited to get through the process, which they've done an excellent job on. So I just encourage you to get out there, even for family nights. We have that on Friday nights from 6:00 to 8:00. So definitely get out there for that one. I just want to also just give a shout out to the city council. I know for all of us, there's a lot of stuff that goes on behind closed doors and like subcommittees and stuff. And, you know, I've been working with you guys in a lot of the subcommittees in the last few months, and I think a lot has gotten done. And it's really good to see those things that maybe the public doesn't get to see, but ideas get to be exchanged. And Stu, you and I had a great meeting last week that we got to work through a lot, same, Zach, you and I today. So I just want to thank you guys because not everybody gets to see what happens all the time. Everybody just sees here what's on the dais. So. Last two things is the nonprofits. I see a lot of the nonprofits coming up and talking. I don't know how many of you know about the Community Reinvestment Program. Did I say that right, Kevin? The CRP program. You get up to, you can register in for, I believe, $50,000 for your nonprofit. So if you guys are needing funds and are working with Temecula residents, I strongly urge you, especially for, I don't know if you guys have submitted for it, for the Christmas dinner. I love that. You guys did good. To definitely take advantage of that because it is a blessing that we can definitely dive into. We want to be able to offer everybody. And the last thing, I was, I'm super excited about the National Night Out. I think Randy, you and I were talking about this like last year, a couple of months ago. So I believe it's going to be such an incredible way for our community to really connect with the police officers. I actually used to jump in the McGruff myself. So if you guys need some help, I don't mind jumping in. I'm short enough. So, but it's really incredible. They do a lot of great things with the kids. It's just to be able to see that police officers and firefighters are part of our community for our children and our residents. So I'm really excited to be a part of that and see what you guys are bringing to the table with that one. So please come out. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mary Ann.
Thank you. Well, you'll see in front of you the, a slide for the Quality of Life Master Plan. And that is a plan that looks forward to 2040. So we like to look to the future and make sure that Temecula is prepared and doing the things that we can do to best serve our residents. And to do that, we established a Blue Ribbon Committee. And that committee was made up of business leaders, community leaders in every field imaginable. So we had a really good cross-section of expertise. And we also spent months and months, our consultants did, out in public and having public workshops and public meetings to get ideas and recommendations from residents as to what our priorities should be looking out to 2040. And we got wonderful feedback. So we had our final meeting last week for the Quality of Life Master Plan the Blue Ribbon Committee did. And we reviewed the draft document that will be going to our commissions in the next few weeks. And then it will ultimately come back to the city council. So it includes everything from, you know, everything, goals and objectives of what our core values are. And then how the city will address those core values through projects, programs, and policies. So Quality of Life Master Plan, if you want to read about it, you can go to the city website and you can review it. And then you can also attend any of the commission meetings. Check the city website for the agendas for those meetings. And you can see when you may attend them, if you want to also publicly comment on the Quality of Life Master Plan and make suggestions. So it's something that's going to impact all of us, you know, for the next 20 years or so. So it's very important. And that will be pretty much the document that we follow as far as city activities, policies, and programs. And then I saw a second slide up there. We had Rancho California Water District here today. And it was already mentioned by Pat that we're already participating in the turf, I want to say reclamation, but it's a replacement, replacing turf or grass with landscaping, drought tolerant landscaping. So Stu and I had that meeting today as part of the Beautification Subcommittee. And it was interesting that a couple of ladies from the Sierra Club came and participated. And they brought a list of their recommendations for drought tolerant plants that were specific to fostering more the population and supporting the population of the monarch butterfly. I don't you know that monarch butterflies' numbers are declining because of change in migratory habits and also because of change in their habitat. But these ladies are talking about the simple milkweed plant that we can all plant in our yards. And they are attracting, the butterflies eat them. And that's where they then establish, you know, build larva and they establish the transition from a caterpillar to a butterfly. So we can help to add to the butterfly or the monarch population by planting milkweed in our yards. Now, the catch is that so many people are doing this, none is available. So you're going to have to check with, you can check online or you can check with local nurseries or hardware stores and be there when the door opens because they sell out very, very quickly. I have other things in my yard. We have a butterfly garden as well, but I haven't been able to secure any milkweed yet. And I know where I come from in Missouri, it is a weed and grows like a weed. So in California, we have to be a little bit more intentional. So let's go ahead and join the monarch butterfly project. And you can plant milkweed in your yard. And it will help, you know, with watering and saving water, drought tolerance. And we'll see if we can see some more butterflies around. So thank you.
Thank you. Stu.
Well, I wasn't going to present anything, but tomorrow night, no, Thursday night is the last concert in the park for this year. Which is depressing because they're so cool. It's like, oh my gosh. It went so fast. Six weeks was just, yeah. And it's, it's been really, really supported by the community. Last week, there had to have been 650 people there. It was super crowded, but it was super fun. So thank you, City of Temecula. I've had many people say, tell the city, thank you. So thank you, community services, for putting that on. And also I was going through a brochure that was left on my desk for the Old Town Theater. And there are a lot of tribute bands. I'm a kind of a old time rock and roll kind of guy. And there's a lot of cool tribute bands coming to the Old Town Theater. So if you get a chance, go online to the Old Town Temecula Community Theater and book your tickets because there is some really, really fun concerts coming up. So look out for them.
So if we go to Thursday night to the concert, will we see you in the mists dancing?
Of course you will.
All right, I'm going.
Good. All right. I just have a couple of items. I can get the first slide, please. The August 2nd, we are doing a city-owned vacant land workshop, 9:00 AM here at the conference center across from our chambers. Encourage everybody to come out if they can. You can see in red, these are vacant lands owned by the city, variety of other property levels throughout Temecula that we have direct control over. And we thought it was an important thing for us to have sort of a perspective view of those properties and start to think about what we want to do into the future, especially as we are completing our Quality of Life Master Plan and a lot of our capital improvement projects are moving forward. And we are also working on our general plan updates. So, you know, I thought, wanted to bring this up to everybody and make sure that you all have a chance to weigh in on a very important event. All right. And then I also have a video I'd like to show this evening. So in continuing our alumni series, we got a chance to reconnect with former mayor, council member, senator, and county supervisor Jeff Stone. I could mimic. I was, I'm saying something brilliant here. Mayor Jeff Stone, friend Jeff Stone. Jeff has been an important part of the Temecula Valley, this city, and this community for many, many. and this community for many, many years. And his legacy lives on with his family as well, contributing in new and great ways to our, our region. You know, he carried through, I think, a very important work ethic back when he went to pharmacy school and, and ran, you know, a pretty remarkable business and, and brought that ethic to this city and the City Council. I've known Jeff for many years, and like everybody else I know that has had the opportunity to work with him or know him, we've all learned from him. And he's been a good friend, a good mentor, a good colleague. His advice is always very candid and very straightforward. And even when we, when we find areas that we don't necessarily agree on, we're able to find that consensus. It's good to have him back in the city for a little bit to give us an update and tell him, tell us all how he's doing. And appreciate the friendship and the mentorship over the many years, Jeff. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Jeff Stone. I'm a former Temecula resident. I lived here 40 years before moving to the state of Nevada. Well, life has been a little bit busy for me, as you all know. I left the City Council to run for the Board of Supervisors. And then, after the 2010 census, there was a brand-new Senate seat, the 28th district seat. And I ran for that in 2014 and succeeded. And I was very proud to represent this area in the State Senate. I was elected to a second term. And then, I was granted a presidential appointment by the previous administration to run the United States Department of Labor for the 10 western states, which was at that time thought to be kind of a sleepy federal agency. No one knew that the Department of Labor was going to take such a prominent role when COVID hit. So, it was my job to look after the 10 western states and territories and made sure that they were all getting their stimulus money as the entire country was shut down. It was a labor of love. It was one of the highest callings that I've ever had and gave me probably a, a lot of satisfaction, as many of you can probably imagine, to make sure that people that were stuck in their homes had enough food and have money to pay for their mortgages and to make it through COVID, which I'm hoping we, we see in the rearview mirror at this time. What attracted me to Temecula was the family values, the public safety, and the plethora of parks. So, it does my heart a lot of good when I come back for a visit to see my, my family. I still have my sister Lori that lives in Marietta, is a council member in the city of Marietta. And I'm here visiting my son. It happens to be Election Day. This is 30 years now that I ran for the City Council of the city of Temecula, which is kind of interesting that I'm here. But, you know, I love coming here to visit my family, but I can't tell you the sense of pride that I have when I drive through the city. I think it's the nicest city in the state of California. I really do. And that came with good leadership, not only from the original council and the council that I was on, but all the successive councils, including the one today, where quality of life, family values, public safety remains number one. And that's why so many people want to come here. And that's why property values have shot up so much, because people want a piece of Temecula, because it really is a part of the American dream the way at least I've envisioned it. Of course, I miss seeing a lot of friends and colleagues that I've developed a relationship with over the past 40 years. And especially here at City Hall, I miss the evening breezes that come from Oceanside. It kind of cools Temecula down after a hot day, the beautiful sunsets, the firework shows, the Christmas parades, the 4th of July parades, a sense of really being a part of the community. And I haven't lost that. I still feel like I'm a member of this community, even though I've, I've transitioned to another state and I wanted to continue my public service. I'm actually running for the Nevada State Senate. And I see Nevada at its infancy. And I've learned what are some of the good policies to emulate from California and what are some of the bad policies to emulate from California. And my goal is to make an economic powerhouse out of Nevada and bring the quality of life to Nevada using Temecula as the proven example of family values and quality of life. I've always said that local government is the government closest to the people. You know, the more you go up the ladder, county supervisor, State Senate, State Assembly, Congress, US Senate, you become a little bit more removed, a little more detached. Now, of course, with social media, you can kind of maintain those relationships, but it's still not the same. What I love about the Temecula City Council and the Temecula city is it's welcoming to come into this beautiful city hall, this beautiful council chambers, where you have council members that listen to the concerns of the residents. And they still take quality of life seriously. They take public safety seriously. They take open space seriously. The Community Services Department still puts out their publication talking about the plethora of activities that you can do living here, many of which are free. So, that's what I miss about Temecula, the hometown feel. But I want to reinstate that in the communities I live in today. But I do miss Temecula. I love coming back here. And, and I will continue to come back to Temecula, because I still consider it home.
All right. It was wonderful to, yes. It's wonderful to reconnect with, with Jeff and have him speak to us and give us a quick update on how he is. And so, we'll continue the outreach to our, our former council members and colleagues over the, over the years here, just so everybody gets an update of how these folks are, are doing. All right. Moving on to the consent calendar, we have a bunch of items listed here. Go ahead and read through those. First is to waive reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Second, approve action minutes of July 12, 2020. Approve list of demands. Number four, adopt ordinance 2022-10, amending Title IX of the Temecula Municipal Code, adding Chapter 9.80 Shopping Carts. And find this ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to SEQA Guidelines, Section 1506.1B3. This is the second reading. Number five, approve amended and restated management compensation plan. Number six, approve service contract with George Hills for general liability claims and administration services. Number seven, approve an appropriation for the Americans with Disabilities Act Transition Implementation Plan, PW 18-16. Number eight, adopt resolution to establish the amount of voter-approved Measure C annual special tax levy for fiscal year 2022-23. Number nine, approve plans and specifications and authorize solicitation of construction bids for the traffic signal promenade Mall Ring Road, PW 21-15. Number 10, approve plans and specifications and authorize solicitation for construction bids for the I-15 French Valley Parkway improvements Phase 2, PW 16-01. And number 11, award construction contract to All American Asphalt for Pavement Rehabilitation Program, Meadowview-Paloma del Sol Project, PW 21-06. 12, award construction contract to American Asphalt South, Inc. for the citywide slurry seal program fiscal year 2021-22, PW 22-02. And item number 13, receive and file temporary street closures for National Night Out. I'd like to pull just a couple of these, just for update from our Public Works Director, if we could.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Ron. And I believe the items you were referring to are 10, 11, and 12.
Yes, sir.
And I'd be happy to provide updates on those items. The first item, number 10, is the approval of the plans and specifications and authorized construction bidding for the I-15 French Valley Parkway Phase 2 project. And this is the culmination of a lot of work by a lot of people on a project that is, I believe, going to be the largest capital project ever constructed by, by this city. And it is to add two lanes to the Interstate 15 Freeway northbound from Winchester to the I-215. And you may be asking why the city is doing a project to add two lanes to the interstate freeway? And that is because at the direction and support of this council, the city has taken on this project to address the congestion issue on the Interstate 15 freeway. So, this project, we think, will make a significant impact on that congestion on the, on the freeway on the northbound side. So, we are planning to advertise for construction bids in September and begin construction on this project before the end of this year. It's about a two-year construction project. Our engineers estimate for construction is over $75 million, and the total project costs for this project is over $135 million. And those funds were put together from a variety of different sources, state, federal, and, and city funds, to be able to move forward with this project. So, very happy to receive your approval and be able to advertise for construction bids on this project.
Awesome. Thank you. And then 10, 11, 12, those are fun.
Yes, item 11 is to award the construction contract for the pavement rehabilitation program for the Meadowview Streets and the Paloma del Sol Loop Road. This project is to do a, what we call an ARAM treatment to the streets in the Meadowview community and the Paloma del Sol Loop. So, that's the Amerita-Montreal loop around Paloma del Sol. This ARAM application is, is a little bit above the typical slurry seal. It includes an asphalt leveling course, as well as a chip seal and then a slurry seal on top of that. So, it's a, it's an upgraded treatment, and that's due to the condition the Meadowview streets haven't been maintained in, in a number of years. So, they, they've gotten to the point where it really requires this upgraded treatment. So, we're doing about 14 miles of streets, over 2 million square feet of streets in the Meadowview community and the Paloma del Sol community with the ARAM treatment. And so, this is to award that construction bid for about $4.3 million for that, that project. And then item number 12 is to award the construction contract for our annual citywide residential slurry seal project. And this project is to apply slurry seal to all of the residential streets in the Paloma del Sol and Pasado del Sol neighborhoods. So, two of the largest neighborhoods in the city. It's over 8 million square feet of streets, about 39 miles of streets in those two neighborhoods. And the bid on that was over $2 million and is to do that slurry seal application. It's something that we, we've been doing on an annual basis in different residential neighborhoods throughout the city, so we can maintain the quality of the streets in, in our residential neighborhoods. So, we're, we're happy to move forward with those projects as well.
Thank you.
Question, do we have a timeline on that, Pat?
Yes, both of those projects will be done before the end of the year. So, we'll be starting in August, and, and they'll be about a two-month duration for both of those projects.
Okay, thank you. And move approval.
Second. All right.
I got one question for the city attorney. Do, since I live in Meadowview, should I abstain from the Meadowview? No?
No, we've determined that one is fine.
All right. All right, please cast your votes. And I'm going to assume that passes 5 to 0. Thank you so much. We're going to recess to the Community Services Meeting.
I will call to order the Community Service District meeting. Madam Secretary, please note, we are all still here. Do we have any public comments? Okay. So, we'll go on to the consent calendar, which is item number 14, approve the action minutes of July 12, 2022.
Move approval.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Please vote. And that passes 5-0 also. So, we have a CSD public hearing. Item number 15, approve Temecula Community Service District proposed rates and charges for fiscal year 2022 through 2023. Can I have a staff report, Ms. Hennessy?
Of course. Good evening. So, this item before you tonight is to approve the rates and charges levies for the next fiscal year, '22, '23. The TCSD has four separate service levels, where we provide services to residents for residential street lighting, perimeter landscaping and slope maintenance, residential recycling and refuse services provided by CRNR, and then unpaved street and road maintenance. The rates are determined annually by our consultant, Webb Municipal Finance, and are noted in the attached engineer's annual levy report. Levies are assessed through separate charges that appear on property owners' property tax bills. Per Proposition 18, all property owners were notified 45 days prior to tonight's hearing, and the notices were mailed out on June 10. Annual TCSD rates and charges are anticipated to generate just under $11.8 million in total revenue for all service levels combined for fiscal year '22, '23. And any property owners that are questioning the classification of their property or requesting a hardship appeal must submit their request by December 1st of 2022. Service Level B, which is for residential street lighting, the rate will remain unchanged from the prior year at $25.68 per single-family residence per year. Within Service Level C, which is the perimeter landscaping and slope maintenance, there are two zones that previously approved annual rate changes. And they are set at the lesser of the CPI change or 5%. And the CPI change this year was over 5% at 5.76. So, the rate increase will be set at 5%. And you can see the rates for the two zones noted here. And then all other 27 zones will remain unchanged. Service Level D, which is the residential and recycling and refuse services, will increase just over 6%. Per the franchise agreement with CRNR, the annual increase is based on two factors, one being the CPI or Consumer Price Index, which is going up 5.37%. And then the other is the landfill tipping, landfill tipping fees, which is increasing 8.6% to a total rate of $330.58 per household per year. And then finally, we have Service Level R, which is the unpaved road maintenance, at 11, at $115.26 per single-family residence per year. And vacant property is assessed at $57.62 per year. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions. And we also have Heidi Sheppi from Webb in the audience for any technical questions.
Anybody have any questions? Okay. So, we'll go on to the public hearing. I will open the public hearing. Do we have any public comment?
We do. We have one comment for the public hearing. Sal Semenati. Mr. Semenati, you have five minutes, because it is a public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I've submitted a letter with some enclosures.
Mr. Semenati, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I see that you are actually on the hearing, not for this item, but for we debatement number 17.
Yes.
This is actually number 14. So, if you can hold on for just a second. Thank you.
All right. No other public comments? Then I will close the public hearing. And is there any discussions or is there a motion?
A move approval.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Please vote. All right. And that passes 5-0. So, do Community Service Director report?
Yes, indeed. We have a few slides this evening. There we go. So, the first item, just to follow up on what TCSD President Stuart mentioned earlier, our last summer concert series is going to be this Thursday, July 28. The featured band is Detroit Underground, and they cover songs from Bruno Mars, Shaka Khan, Stevie Wonder, and Earth, Wind &amp; Fire. The concert will be taking place, I, I hear the sounds of approval there. Excellent. The concert will be taking place at the Amphitheater at the CRC on Rancho Vista. Gates open at 5:00 PM, and the concert is from 7:00 to 8:30. And just as a side note there, TCSD President Stuart mentioned our tribute band series over at the theater. And I just wanted to say, if you're interested, get your tickets quickly, because every one of those shows sells out. They've been wildly popular since we introduced that series, and you, you don't want to miss them. They're really great, great bands. Also, we have an Art Off the Walls event coming up on Friday, August 5, from 5:30 to 8:00 PM. That's in front of the Merc and the Lot on Main. It's a free art show with live music, refreshments, and an artist reception featuring Jennifer Bonato. So, you'll want to head on over there for your Friday evening, walk around, enjoy the fresh air, and then maybe stay in Old Town for some dinner. As a quick note, just as we're talking about cooling down, and Councilmember Alexander was kind enough to mention our public swim, which is fantastic, best bargain you can get for the summer, a dollar for residents, $5 for non-residents. We also wanted to mention our splash pad hours. So, the splash pad is located at Nigar Park over on Margarita. And the So the splash pad is located at Nagar Park over on Margarita, and the splash pad hours are Tuesday through Sunday from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM and 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM. And just a note that it is closed on Mondays, and that's for regular maintenance. That way, if we can do the regular maintenance every Monday, hopefully we forestall any major maintenance needing to be done. Just another note on that, on Thursdays, we have an inclusive social skills program, and so the park is actually not open until the public until 11:00 AM on Thursdays, just for that. Starting August 16, these hours go through August 14, and then starting August 16, once a lot of kids are back in school, we'll be modifying the availability based on availability need weather, just to see how much demand there is. Typically, the splash pad runs through mid-October. Usually, once we get into the fall, the hours are Saturdays and Sundays from 9:00 to 1:00 and 2:00 to 6:00, so same hours on Saturdays and Sundays, and weekdays afternoons only, 3:00 to 6:00 after school. And next slide, please. And then finally, just wanted to mention that we have the Cool Center operating and Mary Phillips Senior Center, as we have these heat waves, very important for people who have the option to get out of the heat. So the Mary Phillips Senior Center is a designated cool center from June through October, and anyone can go. It's not just for seniors. If you need respite from the heat, it's open to anyone. The Cool Center operates Monday through Friday between 9:00 and 4:00 PM, and we do open on Saturdays if there's a designated heat event during that Saturday. So that concludes my report, unless you have any questions.
No questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
General managers report?
Nothing additional to add, Mr. President.
Okay. Directors reports, anybody? All right, I will adjourn this meeting until the next one.
All right, where I'm going to go ahead and, let's see, which one are we doing? Oh, Temecula Public Finance Authority, let's go ahead and start that meeting. Roll call, we are all still here. Do we have any public comment this evening? No. Moving on to the consent calendar. Item number 16, authorize fiscal year 2023, 2022, 23 special tax levies for the community facilities districts. Can we have a report, please? Oh, this is consent. No report. Do you want to give a report yet? No. All right, let's skip it. How about a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
All right, please cast your votes. And that passes 5 to 0. All right, and do we have an executive director report this evening?
Nothing tonight.
Any board directors' reports?
Nope.
All righty, seeing none, we will go ahead and adjourn the meeting and reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting. Moving into public hearing, item number 17 now is adopt weed abatement lien resolution for fiscal year 2021, 22, and 2223. And if we could get a staff report first from Mr. Watson, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The city of Temecula is responsible for the abatement of hazardous vegetation for properties that are not cleared of hazardous vegetation during the spring and summer abatement season. On May 1, the city manager approved an agreement with Inland Empire Property Services to bring the parcels with hazardous conditions into compliance with the Temecula Municipal Code. The owners of these parcels are billed by the city to recover the cost of the contractor plus administrative fee. If the owners do not respond to the billing request, the city places a lien on the property to recover the cost of abatement. All of the owners were properly notified via certified return receipt requested mail of the need to abate hazardous vegetation conditions on their properties, and were given 30 days to remove the hazardous vegetations themselves prior to the city taking a forced abatement action. As per the Temecula Municipal Code, Section 8.16.090, the lien process requires that a public hearing be held before the city council to take comments from the property owners with respect to the cost proposed to be assessed against their properties and to confirm those costs. Following the public hearing, the council must adopt a resolution for the fiscal year which, one, confirms the cost incurred by the city in performing the forced abatement work, two, provides that the actual abatement cost will become a lien upon the property and upon recordation in the amount of the cost shown on Exhibit A, which is part of the package tonight, and three, provides that the resolution will be transmitted to the Riverside County Treasurer Tax Collector so the amounts of the assessments can be entered upon the parcels as they appear on the assessment rolls, and the costs will be collected via the property tax bill. Upon adoption of the resolution, staff will forward the adopted resolution for filing with, on, for filing with the Riverside County Tax Collector for recordation with the county recorder. We have 41 properties on the list this year, with three of those which were from last fiscal year. And that concludes my presentation. I am available for any questions.
All right, any questions from council? All right, seeing none, let's go ahead and open the public hearing, and we have one public speaker. Yes?
We do. Mr. Semenati, come on up.
Now, sir. Good evening.
Feels like deja vu.
Mr. Semenati, you still have five minutes.
I submitted a letter and some enclosures regarding my weed abatement situation. I've owned this property in Temecula, it's five acres, since 1977. I'm not a newcomer here. Anyway, I'm very familiar with the weed abatement process. As explained, the weed abatement team goes out and surveys whatever properties need to be abated. They send out a certified registered letter informing them that they have X number of days to do it, and to notify the weed abatement when the work is done. And if the work isn't done, then the city takes the responsibility of doing the weed Again, I've been through this many times. I'm a responsible taxpayer. Whenever I'm notified to do weed abatement, I do it. Unfortunately, this year, I moved, and on May 1, I moved into Menifee. I lived in Menifee, another house in Menifee, and I filed a change of address with the U.S. Postal Service effective May 2. I did not hear anything from the city of Temecula regarding weed abatement until I received a, I don't know if I can, can I, where the...
Oh, just underneath the little camera there. Yes.
Okay.
There it is.
All right, there. This is the first notice I received from the city regarding weed abatement. And it was sent on the 13th of July, and I received it on the 18th of July. Okay? And it's basically a letter saying I did not comply with weed abatement, and the city did it, and I owe $800, I believe, $982. Well, I went to weed abatement in the city of Temecula on the, on the 18th of July. And I was told that the person that was handling my case was a Miss Sophia Lewin. And the clerk came out with the folder on the property, and there was a, what do you call, a registered letter returned to the city of Temecula by the post office. And it had attached to it my new address, which is what you see here. You get, you know, every time the post office gets a letter, then you move, they put on this thing, and they forward it. The weed abatement people had this letter since, let's see, May 2, and did nothing with it. Obviously, they do the certified requirement to make sure that they get it, and the post office does not forward certified registered letters, and I think you can confirm that, whoever handles weed abatement here. Sir?
I believe I'll answer questions after the...
Yeah, let's finish. So yes, we will confirm that in just a moment. Thank you.
Anyway, I was there to see Sophia Lewin, and I was told she won't be available until 11 o'clock, and that she would call me. And if she didn't call me, I should call her. But at 11:30, I gave her a call, and no one answered, and I left a message saying, you know, what the situation is. And at 3:30, I got a call from Mr. Tom Cole, who said he was the supervisor of Sophia, and he would handle the inquiry. Well, his handling of the inquiry was that, number one, the city did comply with the notification by mailing the certified registered letter to the owner of record, shown on the county assessor's office. Well, that's true, but it came back to them without being forwarded, because again, the post office does not forward registered letters. Then the second thing he said is, Temecula has no further notification requirement. It was my fault that I didn't file a change of address with the county assessor's office. Well, you don't file a change of address with the county assessor's office, except when you're making your payment, your property tax payment, and on the back it says change of address. That's when you do it. So he's saying I should have done that immediately. Baloney. The third thing he said is, you know that weed abatement is required every year, and I should have done my weed abatement on the property without even being notified. Well, it's not true that it's done every year, and most of the times it is required, but there have been years where they didn't require it, with drought years where, you know, there wasn't much vegetation developed. So it's not true that it's done every year. And for Mr. Cole to say that it's my responsibility to determine whether I need to do weed abatement, that's not my responsibility, that's the city's responsibility. That's what they have a code enforcement for, weed abatement.
Mr. Mayor, the five minutes is up.
I understand.
Excuse me?
No, just keep going. I appreciate the intel here.
Yes. Well, anyway, I provided a response in my letter to you, and the certified letter was mailed to my old address on the 27th of April. It was returned to Temecula Code Enforcement on or soon after 2nd May. The code enforcement inspection of the property did not occur until the 8th of June. Okay, so they had this returned certified letter in the file, and there's a, I asked for a copy of it, and it's not a very good copy, but it's included in the enclosures, showing that it has the change of address on it. And it also has some initials and notes on the letter itself, on the letter. So they had this thing, and they did nothing with it, okay?
All right. So, sir, I'm, I, I'm way over your five-minute limit, but I appreciate the information, and I think I know where we're going with this.
Yeah.
If you could just summarize for me, please.
Yeah, I'd like to summarize it with that. I tried to resolve the situation, and I thought the weed abatement was under public direction, apparently it's not. And I still don't know who it's on. Apparently, the deputy city manager, this gentleman, is overseeing that. Anyway, Mr. Cole is trying to, what do you want to call, railroad me in that I had, I did what I needed to do, okay? He had the letter in his hand, returned, and he had the new address, and he did nothing with it, okay? So what am I supposed to do? I mean, I'm ignorant, and nobody's told me anything, until I get the letter saying the work has been done and you owe this amount of money.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, and let me, let me ask my colleagues and all that, and we'll get to the discussion. I'd like Mr. Watson to help fill us in a little bit on this, too.
May I say one more thing?
Yes, sir.
I tried to resolve this amicably, and I don't expect to get a free ride on the weed abatement that the city did, okay? I'm willing to pay what I pay weed abatement company that does the work. It's $400. I'm willing to pay that to the city and let the city accept the responsibility that they should have, you know, notified me.
Okay.
I don't, you know, neglect my responsibilities.
I understand. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate the opportunity to address the council.
Absolutely. We'll continue the conversation. Thank you so much. If we could, Mr. Watson, if you could fill in a little bit of...
Yeah, I'll be honest, I don't have all the information on that. So I think if I had a suggestion, it would be to, for the council to direct me to investigate into this situation, and if we do find the discrepancy that there was a problem with the noticing, that you would authorize staff to go ahead at that time and remove this property from the lien role.
Yeah.
If we do find that, in fact. But then also to continue on and adopt the resolution here tonight with that caveat in place.
Okay. And let's, so let's see, let me, we'll get to your item here in just a moment, sir, but do we have any other questions of council? All right. If I could take a moment, yeah, so I'll say personally, you know, public safety always the top priority for me. In fact, the mayor's theme this year is Temecula Safe. And among those items is wildfire risk and safety. In fact, we're starting some new programs in the community that address exactly that. We all know the wildfire risk in California. We all know what a big deal it is to manage our properties, you know, accordingly. Yeah, I've seen the, you know, the fuel reduction programs and management across the state, and yes, not every year is a required year, so I understand where you're coming from, sir. You know, I don't want us to be overly punitive, too, because your story makes sense. I mean, you know, I'd hate to be in that position, too, where you move and, where, how, where did you move to? Just curious.
I moved from...
If you can come forward and speak to the mic.
Sorry. Yeah, sorry, sorry.
I moved from the Oasis senior community in Menifee. I was there for 10 and a half years, and I moved to a property that I own in Menifee, five miles from the Oasis. So it wasn't very far.
All right, no worries, no worries. So, hey, look, you know, there's, you know, I don't want the city to be, it's just my preference here, is I don't want the city to be overly punitive. You know, look, it would be great if you could take a look at your property every year. It's a lot cheaper to have somebody else do it than to have us do it because it requires all of this.
Absolutely.
Can you, can you promise me you're going to do that? Come on, just, just say I promise.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, look, honestly, I think the issue really, if we could just verify the, you know, disruption in the mail service, I think we can just, you know, hopefully just remove this levy, because I think it is, mistakes happen, you know. Of course, you're going to update your address. I do the same thing on properties when you get the bill on the mail. It doesn't occur, I understand. You know, shame on you for not doing the weed abatement this year.
I got this from code enforcement.
But, but look, the fact that you came out here to talk to us tonight and go through all of this and provide all the documentation, let's see what we can do to help you out and apologize for the confusion.
And Mr. Mayor, I think in my 16 years, 17 years on the council, this is the first time, I mean, it is a unique situation, and I appreciate that you came all the way to tell us, and you were very nice about it, so, thank you very much.
It's like occasionally, you know, I'm a professor, and I teach students, and occasionally, you know, you get always excuses toward the end of the semester when you get to final exams about why a student couldn't take a final exam. One of the best ones I ever received was that a student was giving birth, and I was like, of all the excuses I've heard, that one's good. Sir, your reasoning is definitely in the top 10, so, you know, let's, yeah, absolutely. This is a fun meeting tonight. You've got my attention. I don't know why, but you have my attention. You've captured me.
Sophia Lewin, I don't know if I said the name right, left on maternity leave. I don't know what the time period was that she left, but she obviously had it, you know, when she determined weed abatement was required. I don't know when she came back, but, you know, she has a... I don't know when she came back, but, you know, she has a, a baby now, not a baby, but she has a kid that was sick, and that's why she couldn't make that 11 o'clock call. But Mr. Cole has assumed he is Lord and Master, and.
You're going to lose me here in a second. You're going to lose me here in a second. We're not railroading you. We're just trying to do the right thing. They're following code.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm, I'm very happy for.
Trying to help you out here, buddy, but absolutely.
Sophia, I mean, you know, giving birth is a, you know, is a.
We'll get you taken care of.
One of the highlights of a life. I mean, you know, bringing a, a life.
This is where my mother would say, you need to take yes for an answer.
Just take yes for an answer, sir.
Honorable Mayor, if I can recommend that we close the, close the public hearing now.
Close the public hearing. You and I will get a cup of coffee sometime. Yeah, just shoot me a text or send me an email. We'll take care of it.
I enjoyed, I enjoyed this meeting.
And if I could also recommend that we investigate, as the gentleman indicated, so we would investigate this gentleman's concerns, as well as any other ones. There was another concern we heard.
Yes.
Right before the meeting, and so we'll have staff look into it. If there are any issues that things were, any properties that were placed on the roll in error, and payment is made, as the gentleman indicated, or the problem was abated by the property owner, we can certainly have staff remove those.
Absolutely.
From, from the roll before it's submitted, because there is a time period from when the resolution is adopted to submission.
Good. And, thank you, sir.
And we went to pay the $400, you know.
We're good, we're good. Thank you. And, and the only other thing I'd say is maybe we, we just look at, if you could, Mr. Watson, just bring back a policy, because I could see where, you know, in the future, this becomes kind of an issue, and this probably is best handled internally. So if we, if we run into this again, and, and staff is able to look through the records and the rolls as they're putting the final report together and recommendations, to see if there maybe are some, you know, generalized principles that say, look, here's some mistakes that occurred not of anyone's, you know, necessary fault. That way, you don't have to drive all the way down here and have the conversation with us. Then we can just deal with this a little bit more amicably, and we thank you for your time this evening, and I'm looking for a motion in a second.
Move of approval.
All right. And that passes five zero. Let's see, what else do we have this evening? We have a, items for future city council agendas. Do we have anything that anyone would like to discuss? Seeing none, city managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the engaging public hearing. I just want a quick comment, just have a couple of things, that appreciate the opportunity to investigate any concerns from constituents. I think this council agrees that no one's perfect, and mistakes do happen, but the investigation will bear that out. But all of our team, and especially the code enforcement team, they are not punitive. They are excellent employees. I just needed to say that, too, and so they want to do right by the city and by the, by the community. So just on that, earlier, Councilmember Alexander talked about the, the additional community reinvestment program funding that was actually added to the community services funding program, which you talked about, too. And for nonprofits, that application period opened on July 1st and actually closes on Monday, September 12th. And so just want to make sure that the community knows about that, and a lot of the information is available on the website as well, too. Another thing that I just wanted to bring up, and it's actually circling back to Lieutenant Roberts, who I think was being very modest. Everyone's talked about the National Night Out, right? And so I'm, I'm going to talk about it just, just quickly. And as most folks know, it's, it's the largest neighborhood watch event, right? And, which is to promote community engagement with public safety. And although this will be the first year that Temecula actually participates in National Night Out, we're not late to the party. And, and I think it's important to, to really clarify that a lot of times, communities are designating the National Night Out as for that singular opportunity to just reach out to the community and be a part of the community, and so the community can learn about public safety, law enforcement, et cetera. We're already there. We've done that. Those communities are trying to be what, what Temecula is. Public safety is, is a fixture at our special events. We have safety fairs. There's a respect and appreciation. We know that public safety is foundational to the high quality of life here, too. It's our major investment, and the council has made that a priority, in addition to this year's theme of Temecula Safe. So it is certainly appropriate that the National Night Out occurs. Glad that Captain Hall brought it up. Glad that Chief Crater is also participating, Director Russo as well, too. But don't sell yourselves short. It, it's definitely an event we're coming out to, but we're there, and other cities are trying to get to where we're at, too. And then a final thing, Mr. Mayor, if I can, it's just a reminder, we're squarely in the middle of, of summer, and vacations, and parties, and activities, and things like that, too. And we do remember that Temecula is safe, but it's important for the community and for visitors to do their part as well, too. So please, if you're out, obey the speed limits, show patience while you're driving, and please, please, do not drink and drive. That concludes my report.
Very well said, sir. Thank you. And city attorney report?
No report.
All right. Well, I'm reluctantly closing what I feel was a very fun meeting. So thank you all for joining us, and we will see you next time.